Everybody. Agenda for this evening's public notice special call, city council meeting. Wednesday, August 28th, 2024, Jasper City Hall, 465 South Main Street. It's now 6:00 PM. This agenda was posted as required under Government Code Section 551.041. For more information or copy of the open meetings act, please contact Attorney General's Office at 1-800-252-8011, or the City Secretary's Office at 409-384-4651, or you can fax at 409-REQUESTIN at 409-383-6125. To let everyone know, the City of Jasper City Council chambers is wheelchair accessible, and accessible parking spaces are available. Requests for accommodations or interpretive services must be made 48 hours prior to this meeting. Please contact the City Secretary's Office for further information. Meet us in the call order. Mr. Scott, would you offer us prayer, please?
Good Lord, prayer. Blessed be your Father, who, in all of all things, we give you thanks for giving us faith, giving us hope, and you've given us love. Father, even through fire and disaster, you covered us and you washed over us. Now, Father, I pray that this meeting will be what we're going to be. We're going to keep all of us in a pleasant space. May it be the peace of God and God the peace be with each of us. You are sweet, in Jesus's name I pray.
Amen. Thank you very much. We're going to have our public comments, and I just want to let everyone know when you're making public comments, please understand that City Council cannot discuss or present any presented, cannot discuss any presented issue, nor can it take any action on any issue at this time, except that a statement of fact, including policy, may be made in responsive to an issue. Attorney General's opinion, J.C. dash one six nine. Two public comments we have, Mr. Jesse Frazier. Remind you, when in public comments, you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Jasper. This thing is called because I guess the city's proposing increasing taxes for the property and electric rates. First of all, I'd like to know really why, how much the city is in red, and instead of raising taxes, maybe the city could cut spending. I went to, I don't know if the city's budget comes up for renewal, like insurance bids, but that was the main topic of the county commissioners this morning, was insurance for employees, and maybe that's why the city is in red all of a sudden. Maybe it's been going on for a while, and it's just time to re-correct. But if it's just a little bit of a burden, I don't see why the city can't just tighten up and watch the overtime, watch how much gas they're burning in their cars, and maybe cut some of the city perks that some of the employees are getting. As far as the electric bill goes, what you have here on this paper here, it really doesn't tell me anything, because it doesn't say how much we're paying per kilowatt hour, and it doesn't even say how much we're paying now for the customer charge. So there's a lot that needs to be improved on in these respects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have, next we have Mr. Bo Lember.
Giving honor to God.
Mr. Lember, if you have three minutes, would you please come up to the podium?
Now speak from here, so I don't have to step on everyone, please. I got a strong voice.
If you'd like to.
Absolutely.
Can everyone hear Mr. Lember?
Absolutely.
I'm asking the people, Mr. Lember. Can everyone hear Mr. Lember? He wants to speak from where he is. So if you can hear him, it's okay with me. Counsel, is that okay with you?
Thank you. Ladies, I'm a gentleman. I don't step over ladies.
You got three minutes.
Absolutely. Giving honor to God, my Lord, Savior, Jesus, Mayor, Council, young lady, and men, people of Jasper. My concern today is homeless. We have homeless in back of the theater over here, all in the woods back there. Homeless over there by Brookshire Brothers. My challenge to you all, what can we do to help? I do my part. What can we do to help these people? There has to be a reason why it's like this. I see them in the rain, everything, without food. I take them food, and it takes a village. All I'm asking is, can we do something together? Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Lember. At this time, this public meeting before the City Council, the City of Jasper, Texas, the City Council of Jasper, Texas, is holding a public meeting day on August 28th, 6:00 PM. This meeting is taking place here at Jasper City Council at 465 South Main Street. This meeting will be open to the public, for council to receive public opinions regarding the potential adoption of a three-year incremental rate adjustment for the electric rates. This notice is being posted in accordance with the public notice requirements set forth in Chapter 551.041, Notice of Meetings of Local Governments. I will now turn it over to Mr. Craig Bennett, who is the attorney for the city for this matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Excuse me, excuse me.
And just so everybody knows, there will be a time for public comment on the electric, proposed electric rate increase. So the public comments that have already occurred is not forecasing. Doesn't mean public comment's done. There will be a period. I'm just here, as mentioned, my name is Craig Bennett. I'm just here to set out the issue and provide information to the public. I am the outside attorney who has been assisting the city with this matter. As many of you know, this, the rates currently being proposed sprung out of a dispute that arose last year of the electric rate increase that was proposed. And so we are now holding this meeting and really genuinely wanting to hear from the public before rates are set as part of that whole process. And so first, I only expect to take about five to 10 minutes. This will not take long as I lay out the issue for the city council. And I apologize, I've been looking to the public. I want to make sure that they understand that I'm here also to answer questions that they may have and be helpful to them. But first, a little about me. I'm the outside attorney that the city has hired to assist them in this process. I've been working with the city for the last year. We also work with outside rate consultants who are very well-regarded in the industry. I represent a lot of electric utilities, municipally-owned utilities. I represent the City of Austin's electric utility, Austin Energy. I also represent CPS Energy, which is the City of San Antonio's electric utility. I also represent other utilities as well and cooperatives. Ultimately, this is my field of expertise. I teach at the University of Texas Administrative Law. I also teach that same class at Baylor in the law schools in each of those schools. And so the city reached out to me as a subject matter expert to help them understand how to set their rates within accordance with sound ratemaking principles before the Public Utility Commission, and that is essentially what I do. That's the area of practice that I have. And so I came in to work with them. We hired S.A. Synergy, formerly Snyder Electric, but now Synergy, which is a well-regarded ratemaking group, consulting group. And we have been working with the city over the last six months to come up with recommendations from the consultants to set rates in accordance with sound ratemaking principles that the Public Utility Commission recognizes as appropriate for municipally-owned utilities. And so one thing I wanted to spell, because I've heard from a number of people that there is a perception that there's going to be an 85% increase in rates. That's simply not the case. Now, what that has come from is taking one small portion of a bill, one item, and then extrapolating it out. What was posted today, and it's my bad, I should have told the city to post it sooner, but what was posted today was showing how a typical bill of a typical customer using 1,000 kilowatt hours a month, what that would look like, what their current bill is and what their projected bill would be after this proposed rate change. The city is proposing a three-year phased-in rate increase, and that actual rate, based on historic fuel costs, and what your rates have been, would result in a 3.5% increase each year for the next three years for a total of 11% on the average customer bill, residential customer bill, over the next three years. So it's not an 85% increase, it's literally a 3.5% increase to an average bill. Now, I recognize that if you just take one small component of a bill and say, "But this is going up this much," it looks disproportionate. But what most people care about is what is my bill going to be, my total electric bill? Well, your electric bill is made up of a number of different components. One is a customer charge. Another is an energy charge, another is a fuel cost. And so the bulk of your electric charges come from your fuel costs. That accounts for the vast majority of your electric bill. So the changes that are being proposed are to the customer charge and the energy charge. And when you factor those in and you add in your fuel costs, again, the average customer bill will increase by 3.5%, and then each of the next three years, roughly. It's on the city's webpage to show what that percentage would be each year. Now, the thing to be aware of is your electric rates are not fixed, because the fuel cost does vary. That is essentially a pass-through that the city doesn't control. And so your rates could go up, they could go down, but it won't be because of this rate increase that they would go up or down more than 3.5%. It would be solely because fuel costs change. This proposed rate increase would result only in an overall rate increase of 3.5% if fuel costs remain stable. Fuel costs go up, they go down. I mean, in the last few years, you've seen that, and that's likely to continue. But using a projected fuel cost that's in the middle of the range of what it's been over the last few years would result in a 3.5% increase overall in a average customer's bill. So I really wanted to dispel that. Also, I wanted to make it clear that what the city is trying to do, and nothing's set. I mean, there is a recommendation from city staff to the city council, but ultimately, the city council will listen to your feedback, and they'll make a decision on what they want to do. And maybe they adopt the proposed three-year phase-in. They could adopt a one-year phase-in, they could adopt a five-year phase-in, they could adopt no phase-in, they could, you know, there are a lot of things the city council can do that's within their discretion. But the city staff thought it most appropriate to recommend a three-year phase-in to minimize the impact to customers. So instead of an 11% increase, it would be a 3.5% increase each year over three years. And again, I want you to be aware, as someone who has been working on the inside of the city staff, they have been very intentional and conscious about really trying to do what's best for the citizens. And sometimes you don't see that, because you don't see what's going on. But as somebody who works with San Antonio and Austin and other utilities, I've been very impressed with the city staff that I've worked with who are really trying to do the right thing to make sure that you have reliable electric power at costs that are affordable to you. And so ultimately, I offer that to you as someone who works with two of the three largest municipally-owned utilities in the state. I think they're doing a very good job here in terms of trying to do it right. And so the city council will hear from you tonight. The numbers, in terms of, there are a lot of numbers. I'm sure you don't understand when you just look at it, that have been posted to the websites related to what the revenue amounts that the city has to recover to operate their utility. What you probably care most about is how that translates to your actual bills. And that's why they put the proposed, or the three-year average bill change impact information up on the website today. And again, I apologize, that was my fault. I should have had them put it up sooner. So I bear the responsibility for that, but it is up there. It has been up there most of the day. In terms of, for the city council, I'll turn to you now just for a moment. The city staff has made this recommendation to you. They believe it is a sound recommendation. I agree with them. Based on working with the rate consultants, I think it is in accordance with sound ratemaking principles. It's obviously up to you as to what you do. You have a luxury that, and I also want to say, your city utility is in good shape. I mean, a 3.5% increase or even an 11% increase over three years is not an outsized increase. I can tell you, if you look at the rates that you're charging, they are better than most of your surrounding co-ops in other cities. They're very reasonable rates, and in fact, on the lower end of rates charged. But ultimately, the utility is in good shape. But in order to stay in good shape, an increase is necessary, or else you're going to draw it down from the Cambridge funds, which have been made available to you. Those are there. Those are dedicated to electric utility service. But they are essentially an emergency fund. That's really the purpose of them. That's how they're best served. And if you start drawing them down and you keep drawing them down, and then you run into an emergency, you have a hurricane, you have a need for buying new transformers or things that cost millions of dollars, you will be in a difficult spot. So you're in a very fortunate position as a city. You obviously have choices before you as to what to do. The city is recommending the three-year phased increase that is noted in the data that's been provided to you and also posted on the website. And so with that, under the process that we've set up, I know that we're going to take public comments after this. I certainly, to the extent the city council was okay with it, I'd be happy to answer questions as a representative of city staff, and also answer your questions as a representative of city staff. If you want me to stay up here and answer questions, or I can take a seat, and you can begin hearing public comment, and I'll be available to answer questions, as will the rate consultants that you had there with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, Craig, if they want to, you have questions from the rate payers. Like I said, the consultants are here, Ramsey and Ramon, Ramsey and Ramon, and Craig. So if you have questions for any of those people, you may come up to the podium. Or if you want to stay at your seat and you think people can hear you, you can sit at your seat, but we'd rather you come up to the podium so everybody can hear you. Mr. Grant, you have some comments. You may come up to the podium. Everyone, it's the same. Kind of, it's apply as in public comments, three minutes. If you have questions or if you just have comments.
I have a question. Just to be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if three minutes will do it, but depends on how transparent you want to be in the process, so I'll go ahead and make that. Ms. Bennett, you said that this is a recommended three-year. When they posted the city, this proposed city budgets, they only posted it out to 2025. There's no supporting data for what happens in '26, '27. So if this is a three-year proposal, what happens if we have a meeting next year and we have some, an increase in cost? Are we really locking in the next two years?
No, to be clear, and I'll project pretty loudly, I think I speak pretty loudly. To be clear, this is to phase in what is deemed to be necessary now. If intervening circumstances happen that create a change, because they will be evaluating annually the cost, and if something happens that might necessitate an additional change, there could be an additional change going forward. There might not be. It all depends on intervening circumstances. So this does not lock it in to nothing, no changes. This is basically a change that's deemed necessary now, at least by city staff, but to phase that change in over a period of time.
Okay, so based on your comments, then, if you were not going to recommend a phase-in, you would be doing an 11% increase at one time, and that would be the rate. But because you don't want the rate impact, you're recommending three and change, three and change, three and change.
Exactly.
So that we understand that. I did one, you know, one comment, and the rest of my questions are going to be questions about what I found on the budget. I do understand and applaud Jasper for its electric rates. They're very competitive. But, you know, electric rates should be based on cost. And Jasper has done a decent job of cash flow, and so they don't have a lot of cost to project higher rates. So the reason your electric rates are where they're at is because you've managed your costs and cash flow. I was concerned when I brought this up, that once the Cambridge funds expired, which, by the way, it's not being replenished now and ran out, we would have rate shock, and I'm glad we reached the settlement we did to minimize that. But I want to get back to the one-year budget that was, that was posted on the 2025 proposed budget.
And Mr. Grant, let me just step in, and obviously, it's up to the city council and how you manage. Given that there may be a Q and A, and I don't want to take away from somebody's time, if they go over a little bit, three minutes, I might ask that you, if they're truly doing an in-back-and-forth thing for you, that you not penalize any of that.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
When I took the '25 budget, and this is just to be informative and also answer questions, so I took the '25 budget compared to the '24, and then I removed the transfers, because that's an in-and-out, the purchase tire cost, in-and-out. And also removed, and there is an increase of funds to depreciation, so this year, compared to the budget, not actual, but compared to the budget of last year. It looks like your base rate, other than the energy cost, was 2.918. And, you know, don't take it as exact science and everything, but the proposal now is a 3, 3,201, so it's an increase of $282,000. That comes out to about the 10 and 1/2, 11% that you're talking about. So when I went to the budget trying to find out what some of the drivers were, I found capital budget and distribution of $90,000 that seemed to be an increase in the new. I was just hoping for some transparency of what that was. Where's spending $90,000 that wasn't in the budget last year? Also, we have, under tree trimming and consulting, we have another $45,000 that's never been in the budget before. So am I to understand that we're going to start trimming trees, maybe minimize the outages? What is driving that $45,000?
Excuse me, excuse me. Mr. Grant, if you're going to speak, I'd like to ask the public to please just let him speak. If you will have your turn, if you'd like to say something. Grant, you're coming up on five minutes, so I would like to give everybody a chance to speak. Or if you would like to give your time, if somebody wants to speak, you want to give your time, Mr. Grant? I don't have a problem with that, but he's at five minutes now, so.
I'll be almost, I'm almost through, so.
Thank you, sir.
Getting back to, there's also $70,000 distribution. I don't know if those are capital improvements or not. And of course, the transfer, we're transferring an additional $333,000 to the general fund. That's an increase, and I think that's the name, whatever percentage you're recommending that the city's profit is. So all that put together, I think that those numbers come out to be your increase, but there's just no explanation to that increase anywhere that I can find. I didn't have detailed information. So with that being said, I appreciate the effort, and I appreciate the ability to come up and ask questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bennett, do you have any response to anything that Mr. Grant had to say?
Yeah, just really quickly, thank you for doing that. So in terms of giving more detail, I'd be happy to visit with you, Bill. I'd be happy to follow up and give you more detail. I don't necessarily have detail about some of the granier things, like the tree trimming cost, things like that at this point. But I can tell you that part of some of the changes that came through are maybe because of additional maintenance that's determined to be needed. And so, for example, tree trimming costs are added because it's a necessary expense, and deemed necessary, and maybe it wasn't included in the past. Sometimes, some of the changes are just trying to be consistent with traditional ratemaking principles. For example, determining what is inappropriate, a general fund transfer, what is an appropriate expense for this, and then creating that as a line item and making it appropriate. If, for example, the consultant, and this is just an example, I'm not tying it specifically to anything. But if, for example, there was a situation where, you know, this expense is typically 5% of your overall, you know, administrative in general, and it's been four, we might have set it at five, just to be consistent with traditional ratemaking principles for other entities. But ultimately, I have to look into each of those. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to visit with you about that. I just don't have that information to me.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Lapp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. For Lapp to speak.
Three minutes, but if you need more, just go ahead.
I'm Mike Lapp, and I'm a former mayor of this city, and I served on the Sam Raver Municipal Power Agency for eight years. I did not create the Cambridge Project. Mayor Barber and others did that. Then I came in, and we worked on it, and we got it done. What is the Cambridge Project? It is where the cities of Jasper, Livingston, and Liberty sell electric power to Conoco and Lake Charles. Today, we've received about $67 million from that. And it is a shame that a little city that used to sit here and balance its budget every year, based on taking in, paying for electric, yeah, I mean, water, sewer, garbage, and all these things, can now be in this situation. Now, there's a lot of fancy talk going on here tonight, and there'll be a lot more fancy talk, because the people here at City Hall do not want you to think about that in May of 2022, the people of this city passed a petition, and they amended the charter, that is, the constitution of this city, legally, to say that no utility would be sold over 10% of the cost of that utility. A utility being electric, water, sewer, okay? The City of Jasper and its administration and its council ignored that. Do not let them slip you down all these snake oil deals and this magic and smoking mirrors. This is about the people of Jasper, as per their constitution. 608 people voted for this amendment, 130 voted against it. It passed, and this council, now wait a minute, because some of them weren't here then. But Mayor, you were. You're part of it. Don't push it off on anybody else. You're part of this problem. DeMarcus, you're not, because they kept you in the dark. Okay, I just want to say that to you. They kept you in the dark purposely. They had secret meetings at City Hall that you didn't even know about. Okay? What they did was not even, was just wrong, it was criminal. When the 608 people of the City of Jasper vote for an amendment, and it passes, and 130 vote against it, and the administration of this city, and this council, and you, counselor, say, "To hell with you, we're ignoring it." It's wrong. It's wrong morally. Most of these people claim to be children of God. It's wrong, and I suspect it's criminal. I'm going to give the mayor one benefit. He got out and helped to pass this petition. He went door to door and got it signed. But somebody got to him and shut it down. They got to you. I told you they would. You sold out to the people.
So did.
Now, and I, that's my belief, and I'll always believe it. You sold out, Mayor, and I told you he was going to do it.
I believe you too.
Now, this same administration that hooked and crooked y'all on this amendment is the same administration that's telling you, "Oh, we got to raise the taxes. We got to raise the electric rates. We can't cut anywhere." You believe the same people that hooked and crooked you on the other deal is telling you the truth this time? Now, Mr. Counselor, sitting here from Austin State Capitol, is there not $28 million in the City of Jasper being held from that full of now for electric only?
Please, let Mr. Lapp speak.
There is 29 million. Maybe a little more than that now with the interest. And pursuant to the settlement that we reached with the rate payers, that is held for electric utilities.
Electric only, which means y'all could take all 29 million of this money and give us, even cut electric rates in Jasper for the next few years. But you're not going to have them tell you that, folks, because they wanted to see when this Cambridge project was passed. We talked about it over and over and over. We're not going to start using that in the budget, because if we do, then it will run out. Well, guess what? They did it. They siphoned it here, they siphoned it here, they siphoned it here, they siphoned it here. That's why we're where we're at now.
Excuse me, Mr. Lapp.
Because of hooking, crook.
You had five minutes.
Hooking, crook.
I made the motion to allow him.
Excuse me, please. Excuse me, please. Excuse me, please.
All right.
Okay? Could you excuse me? If anyone else would like to speak, you can. If you would like to hear Mr. Lapp, gentlemen and ladies, please let me run this meeting. Okay, please let me run this meeting. Thank you.
I want to hear him talk.
Thank you very much, sir.
I want to hear him talk.
Anyone would like to hear Mr. Lapp?
They don't want to hear me talk, because they know I'm telling the truth, folks. If you want to get the political party out, I'll get the income something right now.
You may continue.
I've been in jail for.
Mr. Lapp, you may continue.
Y'all are the crooks. I want to say one thing to you, Mayor, and I want to say it to everybody else.
Yes, sir.
Y'all didn't take an oath to the city's administration. You didn't take an oath to the employees of this city. You didn't take an oath to the contractors. You didn't take oath to. You took an oath to the people of Jasper. For what have you done to stand up and do what's right? And y'all have been all lying and lying, just like everybody else on this hooky, crook, lying crap. Everybody in this City Hall knows that this amendment passed, and you will hear everything discussed tonight, except why that amendment was never put in force. You only have people's worked in City Hall, 15, 16. Well, I don't know if it was put in force. Well, I don't know if it was put in force or not, that's a damn lie. And I'm telling you, it's time for the people of Jasper to quit this crap and wake up and do what's got to be done. It's time for this council to do what they need to be done. Don't worry about being on Mike Laut's side. Don't be on Anderson Land's side, don't be on anybody's side. Do what's right for the people of Jasper, be on their side. We need somebody on our side, the people of Jasper. And I wanna say one other thing. I used to say something when I was mayor, and I thought it was some. I won't ever be mayor again, 'cause there's some damn much crooked in this town. You, you get in here, and next thing you know, you get invited over here. Or you get a call saying, well, hey, we get this going here if you give somebody a check. You, hey, I, my niece get, you know. If they let go of all the nieces and the nephews, the brother-in-laws, and cousins, and all this net in the city, y'all cut the budget tonight. My friend Willie Lee Land used to say that a black man couldn't get a job in the courthouse no matter what. I said, yeah, Willie, it's better than that. A white man can't get a job in there unless he kills somebody. And all this crap y'all do at City Hall all these years where you have a job, you just create one. Somebody needs, oh, I got a niece needs a job, put her work up there. Well, we ain't got nothing for her, make some. I want somebody in here in the city to tell me I'm lying about that. Every one of you know what I'm talking about. I love Jesus Christ, I don't lie. But that don't bother a lot of folks. I'm gonna say another thing. When I was mayor, I used to say something. And I believe this in my heart. You know what the people of Jasper want from the city? They want to call the fire department, and a fire department come and have the equipment to put out the fire. They want to call a policeman, and a policeman come that treats them right and knows what he's doing. When they turn on the light, they want a light to come on. When they turn on the water, they want water, the water to come on. And when they flush a commode, they want it to go somewhere else, they don't care where it goes. That's what the people of Jasper want. And I'm gonna tell you something, they deserve it.
Yeah.
They deserve it. And you can talk about race or, you know, are very competitive with other towns and cities. Have other towns and cities received sixty-seven million dollars in refunds from the electric company?
No.
See? If y'all believe in what's going on here, you might as well believe in the tooth fairy and the Easter bunny and all the other things. It ain't true. God bless you, good night.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
May I be recognized as councillor, please?
Absolutely.
Excuse me? You sit in this chair, then you can say that. Once you are gonna run against me, that'll be fine, and I'm sorry for saying that, but, yes.
Thank you.
Just a few moments ago, when we were listening to Mr. Laut speak, I asked to make a motion. I don't think it's necessary to raise your voice to me or to any other councillor member here. That's not proper parliamentary procedure, and, and that cannot, that cannot continue.
But you were making a motion while someone was speaking.
You, you raised your voice.
That was improper too.
You're not even allowing me to speak now.
That was improper.
You're not allowing me to speak now. I don't care to run the meeting, but you should treat us with respect.
Excuse me, sir, would you please have a seat?
Respect my wife.
Excuse me, sir, would you have a seat?
Respect my wife.
Sir, would you have a seat, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't raise my voice to you.
You can talk now, ma'am.
Please, please tell me when you're done, and then I will. Mayor Land, are you done? I deserve the same respect that I give you, and every person who's come here tonight does as well. It doesn't matter if you're the mayor, or you're a councillor, or you're a regular citizen, and they expect us to conduct this meeting with professionalism and, and feelings and care for them. And you can't do that if you're raising your voice at your own councillor. Are, are you allowing me to be finished?
I just asked you, are you finished?
You've interrupted me so many times, I'll let you know when I'm finished. Please don't raise your voice to me again.
You can raise your voice to me, but you can continue.
Or, or to the councillor.
You can continue. It seems like you wanna be sitting in this chair.
Point of order, point of order.
You can run, okay?
I, I don't wanna be sitting in your chair.
Point of order. Yes, sir.
Mr. Land, you, uh, Mayor Land, you need to let this councillor person.
Okay, but let me say one thing. While Mr. Laut was speaking, she wanted to speak.
This is our councillor.
When Mr. Laut was speaking, you wanted to speak, but you wanted to interrupt him. I would not let you do that.
I was not interrupting.
Okay, but you were interrupting Mr. Laut while he was speaking.
Councillor, did I interrupt you?
So councillor, excuse me.
You need to let her speak.
She's speaking, she's speaking.
Not interrupt.
Okay, thank you. You may, you may have your seat, sir.
He's talking about you not interrupt her.
Excuse me?
That's what he's talking about, you don't interrupt her.
Right.
That's what he's talking about.
Same thing that she just got on me about, that's what you're doing to me?
Yes.
I apologize for raising my voice.
I have no desire to sit in your chair, and I think it's very unprofessional for you to accuse me of things and raise your voice to me or to any other councillor member. You're still speaking now. You're still talking, you're not even listening to me.
Excuse me?
Let me say one thing, sir.
This is the most dysfunctional thing I've ever seen in my life.
Angel's land.
And I'm one of them, and I'm part of poor Jasper. Please do your job, everybody.
There is no poor Jasper, which people think. Like, anyways.
You're gonna raise your rate three more.
Because there is something on the council, like what I'm doing and what you're saying that I'm doing, there is something in the, in our policies and procedures about disparaging and talking about councillors. Sir, I'm, I'm speaking right now, councillor, okay? So now, if you wanna speak, you can speak, but as far as talking about councillor members up here, that's not, that's, if you look at your policies and procedures, in our end, that's not. So let me say one thing, councillor, you can't let her have a point of order.
And point of order means the conversation stops.
Yes, sir.
And the person who called and took point of order addresses everyone in regard to that. So with that, Ms. McCroskey needs to speak and not be interrupted.
Amen.
Amen.
I was not interrupting Mr. Laut. I did not interrupt him. I did not speak disparagingly against any councillor member. I was trying to make a motion to allow Mr. Laut to speak. And it's not, it's not professional the way that you've acted here tonight.
You're not being professional. Just let it go. That's something to take behind the doors.
Can we get back on point of order? Excuse me, we are here to talk about the electric rates, the electric bill. Appreciate that, so let's get back on that, please. Let's get back on that, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett was going to the drinks.
I'll wait till y'all are done, and then everybody.
So, Ms. McCroskey, do you have anything else to add?
Go ahead. Every time I try to speak, I'm interrupted, so no, I do not.
Can we please get back to some of the things we came here for?
Thank you, sir, yes, we will. Mr. Bennett, please.
I just briefly wanted to respond. Um, I don't know a lot about what was said, I have not lived here, um, as long as the former speaker and, or the last speaker. Um, so I don't know about all that, but what I can say is, um, I feel quite confident evaluating from a legal standpoint that the ordinance related to the limitations on increase has been complied with, that this proposed rate increase is consistent with that. I, from our, from the city staff standpoint, what has been presented is consistent with that and, and follows that limitation. Um, so I, I, I don't, from what I've seen at least, the city staff has not ignored that. Um, I do agree that the, um, that ultimately you have a choice. Do you decide to use your rainy day fund to avoid any increase? And, because that's what's been implied, and that's the choice you have to make? That's, that's the choice I guess all of us have to make if we have a savings account. Do we use it to, to live today, or do we save it for a rainy day? I mean, that's, that's the choice you have to make, and that's part of what our recommendation is based out of, is transformers are very expensive. You, you're, if you have a major outage because of a hurricane, you're spending tens of millions of dollars. And so if you spend that twenty-nine million dollars that you have right now to avoid having rate increases, and something happens, you just have to understand then, when you're hit with a huge rate increase, why do we have to pay it? Well, because we spent a rainy day, but that's the choice you have to make. I'm not saying what's right or wrong on that. That's your choice, you're the citizens, you're the city council, you choose what to do. But, yeah, there is a big amount of money out there, and you could use that to avoid having rate increases. You could actually use that to give decreases. Would that be responsible? That's the choice you have to ask. Is that the responsible thing to do? Or is it better to save it in case a hurricane? So in case something happens, and you have to spend tens of millions of dollars on transformers and new lines, and I can tell you, it's really expensive. Since I worked for CPS Energy and Austin Energy, it's really expensive for that stuff. And so, it's the choice to make, and I'm not telling you what to do. Obviously, that's your decision, that's the citizens feeling about what they should do. But I do agree that there is that money out there, and you can choose to use it then. So, but I also do wanna make it clear that I believe very fully, it's my legal opinion that the, um, city is complying. This proposal does comply with the limitations passed by the ordinance and the, uh, on increases, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, question from the media. How much is Mr. Bennett paid?
Do I know how much he's, how much he's getting paid?
Yes.
I'd have to look at his contract. You know, I can't, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
But he is ready.
Can anyone up here on council tell us how much Mr. Bennett is getting paid? I'm just asking. Can anyone up here on council tell us how much Mr. Bennett is getting paid? No, so I'd have to look at the contract, I don't know that often.
Can you tell us?
No, I, I can tell you it's a significant discount off of my normal rate. I mean, I don't know, it's ultimately, it's not my place as the attorney for the city, it's not my place to give out information like that.
It's public money, how much, how much are you getting paid?
Right, I'm not trying to avoid it. I have a client, and before I just say stuff on their behalf, I gotta make sure they're okay with it.
It is taxpayer money, so it's public, so how much are you getting paid?
Yeah, so if anyone does wanna know, they can always put in a public record brief last month. Except for that, and you can get that information.
So now, I knew you was gonna say that.
How did you know? Because you've been mayor, you should've known, you should've known that.
I can tell you it's significantly less than what I charge for CPS Energy or Austin Energy, I can't say that.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marsha Anderson, and I live here in Jasper. I live at four forty-seven North Main Street, just across from Beers. And I really feel, uh, like a rookie coming into the middle of a squabble, unprepared. But I have to tell you, I'm a warrior, I'm a soldier, and I believe that we're in the right place at the right time for such a time as this. Um, I would tell you that over the last year, and if this is true for you, I appreciate it if you just raise your hand so that the councillor becomes aware that my telephone bill's gone up five to ten dollars a month the last year. Raise your hand. My internet bill has gone up five to ten dollars a month. My supplemental health insurance has gone up twenty-five dollars a month. My home insurance insurance has gone up fifty dollars a month. My car insurance has gone up thirty-five dollars a month. I don't have cable anymore, and I'm shopping for a new vet because I can't afford, uh, the prices that they're charging there. And I can't even afford anymore, must be hard, complete protection for my poor little old dog. Okay? I'm just a normal human resident in this town. I am not wealthy. I have Social Security and a small retirement that has not increased in the last fourteen years.
Right.
Now, what I've been told is that I can hope to get a two-point-six percent raise in my Social Security this next year. That's before they take out my Medicare increase. And I'm really hoping to get a twenty-five-dollar net increase next year for my Social Security, um, payments. And I have to tell y'all, I am thankful to this day that I have Social Security and that I have Medicare and that I have a home here in Jasper, and that I drive an eight-year-old car that's in good shape. I am not complaining about my life. But I want you to know that I have already gone through the struggle of making small increases across the board in my life. And I'm making changes. I don't have cable, I have broken, you know? And I'm looking at things like, maybe I need to put an RV park in my yard. I think I can get three or four in there. You know, I'm, I'm, y'all, I'm serious. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just overwhelmed with small monthly increases that really don't mean anything independently, but together, they're overwhelming me, and I don't think I'm the only person in the street that that is true. And I just, I know that when y'all ran for office, you didn't come here and run off of here, just squabble with each other. Or with us, that you came to help us, that you thought you could provide some assistance, and we're counting on you to be our leaders, and we need that. And the fact that all these people are here tonight, we want you to know, we wanna help you. But we've not tell you the truth. We can't afford just another three-point here and a ten-point there, and whatever, and whatever, and we're all gonna have to vote in November.
That's right.
But that's not, that's a whole nother assumption, okay? But it's important for us to come out and be honest with each other. I wanna just give you one quick example, I know I'm running out of time.
You may, you may continue.
Um, is anybody familiar with the Cayman Islands? You always hear about Cayman Bay, right?
Yeah.
Well, in nineteen fifty-nine, there were fewer than twenty thousand people that lived in the Caymans. It's a rocky volcanic island. They don't have dirt, y'all, they have rock. They can't have an agricultural product. They didn't have sunny beaches like they have in Jamaica or the Bahamas. They have rock, so they don't have tourists, they don't have an agricultural product. But they had their independence, and they were, what can we do? How can we turn this situation around? Well, their leadership got together and created an incredible place, not to just survive, but to thrive. They joined the United Kingdom. They gave up their independence. They were as independent as Haiti or Jamaica or whoever, the United States. But they gave up their independence for some stability that they knew that they had to have. Who do you know gives up their independence? But they had the courage and the leadership to make some hard decisions. The other thing that they did is that they deliberately allowed every tax, uh, treaty that they had to expire so that now they're the fifth-largest banking center in the world. Not, let's, say that again, I mean, China and the United States are one and two, but they are the fifth-largest banking center in the world. And I'm not saying Newton's gonna become an international banking center. I'm not saying that. But I do think that we need to turn our future around.
Yeah.
And that you can use us as allies, as advocates, to help you get that job done. But status quo's not gonna work, squabble's not gonna work. I don't mean to be ugly, but I'm just, and this, this is my first meeting. But I can just tell you, I love our park, it's a beautiful park, it's a first-rate park, I am proud of it. But there's not a single person in this room that would move to Jasper or leave Jasper for our park.
Right.
No small business is gonna move here or leave here because of the park. We're not gonna attract any industry because of our Christmas lights. We have got to be out of the box. And it's got to be more than three or four people that get together and say, well, you know what we could do? I mean, I'm, I'm ready to have a bank sale, car wash, I don't know what to do. But I have time to research, and I'm not the only one. There are other people in this room that are concerned about what is happening in our world, and we wanna help y'all. So I'm just asking you to please let us help. Now, I have not seen the data, uh, that was put on the website today, and even if they say liars figure, figures lie. And I was the person that put out eighty-five percent rate increase because I can back that up, and you know that I can. But it's a small place, you know, and anybody can manipulate numbers. And anybody can manipulate numbers.
Right.
Anybody can manipulate it. Nobody here's had a chance to really study, but we haven't had a chance to help. And we want to help. We need to know how y'all are going to improve this process. Is it just gonna show up on the radio one day? It's done. We don't know. We haven't had any hard information other than this sad little chart to look at. And we'd like to help. We're not stupid. We're concerned and we wanna help. I don't have to say that.
Thank you.
But I really believe that we have the talent and I know that we have the Lord's help in getting this done.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Garrett?
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Garrett and I live at thirteen ninety-third street. And my thing is this. The city of Jasper had sixty-six, sixty million dollars, sixty-six, sixty-seven, one of it was, and they squandered that money. And now, y'all want us to actually pay more money for our taxes and for the city when you all waste money in the beginning? I mean, whoever you are, I don't remember your name, but it's like, that's ridiculous. I mean, I am a working individual, so why should I spend more money because other people are wasting my money? I don't waste my own money. I have to survive, okay? So basically, I feel like this. The city need to look at other ways of conserving money. If that means I pay off, you need to make me walk. Whatever it takes to actually make it happen without my electricity bill going up anymore and without my taxes going up. And I appreciate y'all's advice and help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Craig, you have anything else to say?
Thank you very much. Just very briefly, I mean, I think you've heard the issues and ultimately, the one thing I will tell you is you do have the twenty-nine-plus million dollars in the Cambridge Fund. It has to be used for electric service only. So that is the purpose of it. What you choose to do with it, whether, as I mentioned before, whether you use it to offset rate increases or whether you use it to keep it in a rainy day fund and implement a rate increase, that's obviously your choice. I understand everybody's concerns about inflation and ironically, that's the reason you're even looking at this. I can tell you transformers and wire and all of that stuff has gotten a lot more expensive and that's just a truism. Just what everybody's feeling with what they are dealing with, the utility deals with the exact same thing. And so all of those things are more expensive for everybody. And again, what you choose, how you choose to implement is really your choice, but those are the issues that you have to face. And ultimately, I'll be happy to answer questions if there are questions. Our rate consultants would be happy to answer questions if there are any questions that you have. That's what we're here is to be at your service. And ultimately, hopefully, if there is anything that you need or assistance you need in making your decisions for at your disposal.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions about the rates, the three-year average bill rate impact at this time? Okay, at this time, it is now six fifty-four. The city will go into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551, Section 551.074, personnel matters regarding the salary for the city manager.